All right, well, it is 7:30. And I'd like to call this meeting of the Mechanicsburg Borough Council of April the 20th, 2021 to order. Before we begin, roll call, we just want to remind the guests that are on, and I don't see any that we have not had before. But the rules for the virtual meeting are posted in the waiting room and also on the website. And I think that's sufficient notice at this point. We don't need to get into the gory details with that. So with that being said, in a meeting called to order, we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence, and then we'll go to roll call. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, please.
President Weber.
Thank you. Here.
Mayor.
Here.
Councilwoman Agarjun.
President.
Councilman Booker. I see. Councilman Pelman?
He's on, right?
He's here.
Okay. Councilman Whitcomb.
I think I'm here.
You're here. Mayor Ritter.
Did I answer? All right.
Solicitor Cassidy.
Present.
Engineer Rogowski.
Here.
Chief Myers.
Here.
Chief Neff.
Here.
EMC Wardle.
Here.
Manager Szczeski.
There.
Assistant manager Boyer.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. My apologies, my other phone, I can't disable it. It went off in the middle of the pledge to the flag, so we neglected to have our moment of silence, so we will do that this time, please. Thank you very much. All right, we move on. We were supposed to have a guest this evening, I believe, Mr. Szczeski.
Yes, Carolyn is here. She just got in. Her microphone is muted right now.
Hello.
There she is.
How are you?
Hello, Carolyn.
Thank you.
Carolyn, the screen is able to be shared if you have anything to bring up.
Just one moment. It's asking me to log in one more time, pardon. Thank you. What we were able to do is take a look over the course of the last couple of months regarding some initial audit materials for the borough, and identified that there are, we have a packet that we have shared, it's about 70 pages, a number of that towards the end of it is related to some specific potential considerations for zoning amendments. But what we have the opportunity to do is take a look at some of the things as it relates to the action plan within the comprehensive plan, and necessarily what is going on as it continues for that implementation, or if there are some items that there is still the opportunity to do a bit more for a focus area of the future. So we have, depending on the time allotment that you would like for us to get into, sir, we can take a look at these and recognize that in moving forward to Planning Commission, that we're going to have quite a bit that we're going to be able to discuss as it relates to, again, thinking about some of the focus of where the next comprehensive plan update wants to be, building on what the Economic Development Committee has had the opportunity to take a look at, and then ultimately, how that will fold into some of the policies specifics to zoning, whether that is within sort of the application types of process, whether that has to do with the specific parking amendments, all those different kinds of things as it may relate to land use or other types of priority areas. So in thinking about the types of things where there is the opportunity to focus, we've identified sort of eight action areas, and as we move forward in the additional discussions with Planning Commission and yourselves, that we will be able to think about how some of the plan goals have the opportunity to be updated, and how some of the plan actions do. Now, one of the mechanisms here is actually considering how you all have the opportunity to go at different types of funding, right, in order to look at the improvements that you design. So whether that's related to mobility, or thinking about some of the safety aspects, because I know safety over the past year has been a focus of different proportions, but there are some short-term kinds of things, as well as some long-term kinds of things. And then how there are elements within the ordinance, parking has always been one that keeps coming up, right, that we want to be able to focus on what those ratios are, what the kind of process is, where it goes, and the different types of elements. There are some definitions, as we got into sort of the second part of thinking about what stems from the comprehensive plan, there is the majority of the packet considering what has happened with some general updates of terminology, as well as the way in which some of these designations could occur. There are components that are thinking about what is some of the modeling that's done as part of Cumberland County, as well as some other types of things. So if there are considerations for the different types of housing, the definitions for those things, so that you all can go. I would like to not make sure, you know, we scroll through each of these pages, but wanted to give you the flavor, if you've not had an opportunity yet to take a look at some things. Roger and I, as well as the Economic Development Committee, have had the opportunity to focus on quite, quite a bit, and look forward to getting at the specifics of what you're ready to tackle first, you know, second, and next, and all of those kinds of things. Roger, I would welcome any sort of questions that you would like to make sure we hit on.
The only question I have is, Carolyn, this, what you sent me didn't include all of this. The one I have is only about 16, 17 pages long, so I'm not sure what happened to it.
Okay, I don't, I am curious, because we did have quite a bit. There was that first part, and then some of the elements. If, I will double check if it related in large part to the communications aspect, because there are a couple of different choices based upon how some of these things have been shifting within, I'll go there.
That's what I'm saying, some of this might not have come through. I might not have this entire thing.
All right, so we can coordinate on that.
Carolyn, can I interrupt for a second? I don't know if you were anticipating us having this document in front of us to review tonight, but we, at least from, from my vantage point, I did not receive this particular document in advance in order to be able to review and prepare any kind of questions, so I'm afraid you'll find my feedback pretty short for tonight.
Thank you, Kyle. I think the intent was to identify that a good bit of work had been done, and that there are quite a number of things that we want to be able to organize specific agenda timeframes, so that we can go through it, because each of these topics, I think, are going to want to fall on particular sort, I'm going to say, a priority list. And so I believe my greatest desire was to give an update as to the work, and that there is this set that we now want to start pulling apart and prioritizing for these particular agendas, so that you do have some packets and some manageable pieces, and not, no one feels overwhelmed, because there is a good bit, as we had the opportunity to take a look at things, which I think you guys have charged us with trying to identify where, you know, these heavy, heavy items, and where are some of the other smaller ones. So we'll be ready to do that as part of those agendas. I appreciate that comment. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Carolyn, I appreciate that.
So, Roger, what we can do then is coordinate how you're ready to do.
Let's, well, I want to get, I'd like to get the rest of this document. I'm looking at the one that I've got, it's not, it has, it doesn't go to this, to how to use this model, it stops back on some of the highlighted things.
Okay.
And I'm not sure what happened, whether it didn't download completely off the email, or what the situation was, but it was not 70 pages long, so if you want to, if, let's maybe an FTP site, or I'll give you a, I'll share a folder on my OneDrive, and you can upload it to there, and then I can download it, send it out to, to council. I, that'll give them some time to review it also, before we start looking into the depth of where, where we want to go. From what I've seen and what you've sent out, there's a lot of work with just those 16 pages, let alone.
Yes.
Let alone the other, let alone the other, but 58 pages that are, that are missing from my document, so I think, I think you're right, I think we, we start breaking this down. I do have a Planning Commission meeting next Monday, where we can start, you know, disseminating some of this, and give them a heads up that this is coming down the road. And then in that case, I think perhaps Councilman Weber sets up what committees he wants to review, what parts, and then we can pull everything together and go from there. I know it might mean a few more meetings for you, Carolyn, but I think we do this at the committee level, and that bring everything back up to council as one continuous document later on, I think we're in good shape that way.
I think that makes a lot of sense, especially with the number of topics that this really starts to get into, and I think if it is all right with council to take that approach, with different groups are going to have that particular focus on a couple of these items, so that in dividing the, the load, right, then it makes everybody's situation and participation the lighter lifting, right, so that we can come at this. And I think it's exciting, from a perspective of years have passed, and the number of things that you all have done, you have set the stage for some things that want to go to the next level, right, and that's where we are. And so I believe that the element of the work is truly something that can be, looking at this as updates, right, we're not starting anew, we're, we're honing in on some goals and thinking about what is it that the borough does have the opportunity to focus on, on which it can focus, excuse me. And secondly, then, how can you align this kind of work with the kinds of pursuits for funding and different avenues that you're ready to do, so that you can communicate out to the residents and get their participation in a few of these, where that, I think, is going to, to hit on a little bit more, you know, some others, others are just a little more technical in nature, so. I do appreciate the opportunity to coordinate with you all, so that we can look at the weeks ahead, and give everybody the opportunity to look at particular packets, or, you know, areas of interest.
I have a question. I think we had talked about inviting stakeholders. Where does that fall into, like, the committees? Is that after we take it into committees, or?
Go ahead, Roger, and then I'll.
That could be, I mean, it could be in both. We can have them, you know, invite certain ones to committee meetings to, to start when it's divided out into the packets to, you know, it would, it would pinpoint a lot more. It's going to make coordination at the end, and tie, meshing everything together a little bit more, more time-consuming, but I think getting everything done at the, that's the beginning of everything should make it a little easier. We can, we can, what I think might be the best option to do would be to get this document out to everybody, then at the next council meeting we have, we can divide this out, because the next council meeting is a committee meeting. And then we can divide this out how we want to, you know, who wants to look at what, and stuff like that. It'll give the chairman's time to look at things, and maybe volunteer stuff, or have Chairman Weber, you know, assign each section to a different committee to go forward there. So, because I know there's certain things in there that won't, that, you know, the Community and Economic Development Committee may not be, you know, wanting to look at, but there's other things that they do want to see, and I think that might, that might help streamline this whole process a little bit more.
I would agree with that. I think that's a good idea, good plan. And as soon as we get something to look at, then I can break it down, and we'll, we'll work together on that a little bit, Roger, so that it flows pretty well at the next meeting.
Yeah, after the meeting tonight, I'll share a folder with, with Carolyn, so she can put this right on there, and then I can send that, share that folder out with everybody on the, on the board, so they all have it. Yep.
Yep.
That would be great. And then if there's the opportunity to make notes and that kind of thing in that, then that's going to even assist in some of the people who may be focused on one area, but just want to identify, you know, or check in with some of the other ones, just so they're keeping abreast, and when we all come back together as those broader council sessions, then everyone will have had the opportunity to, to look at different things in different ways, and be ready for the bigger discussions. This is great.
All right.
Thank you. Very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Carolyn.
Talk to you soon.
Taking your time, appreciate it.
Thank you. Bye.
Okay, while we're waiting for the screen to clear, Roger, are there any other guests this evening?
None is showing up. We have a couple residents, but right now, there's no, no other guests in attendance.
All right, so we will move to the citizens' comments and requests portion of the meeting. Are there any citizens' comments or requests at this time? If so, use your raise hand button. I'm not seeing any. I'm not hearing any, and so we will move on. Correspondence.
I have no correspondence, sir.
Thank you. Approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of council on April 6, 2021. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Whitcomb.
A second.
And Mr. Miller, seconds. Is there any discussion, additions, deletions, or corrections? Hearing none, Mrs. Martin?
Unless I hear a negative response, I will record the vote as unanimous.
And the minutes are approved. All right, we move now to Borough Board's Liaisons. First, we go to the Environmental Advisory Council, Mr. Booker.
Hello, so we, at our last meeting, the Environmental Advisory Council didn't have a quorum. However, I encourage, and something that came up in just discussion amongst the community members, there's a electronics recycling event this weekend, there, it's been well advertised on the Borough Facebook page, and additionally, there is currently a, like, beautification program going on through the Environmental Advisory Council, where you can pick up trash and stuff, and I heard there are prizes, so if people are participating, there are some prizes involved as well.
Very good. Any questions for Mr. Booker? Hearing none, we'll go on to Mr. Booker again with the Harb.
There was no meeting this month, so no report.
Thank you very much. Loan review, Mr. Miller.
We had no meeting, so there was no report.
Thank you. And municipal authority, Mr. Miller.
We met last night, and had a very brief meeting, I mean, we had a light agenda, but we met for about an hour or so. Things were, the things were discussed were street sweeping, and we, the authority approved one of the only action items, an expense to fund an educational effort, which will be in conjunction with the EAC, to offer a class, an educational, which fits into our educational component of our pollution reduction plan, and this class will offer rain barrels, and we have a lot of volunteers with the Penn State Watershed Program that are working in conjunction with Annie Miller, who is a vice chair of the authority to get this underway. And it is, it's great to see everybody come together to, to make that happen. It'll be a really great educational piece for borough residents. And one of the things the Watershed folks shared was a video, you can see some of the videos that they've shared with us on the municipal authority website. Those are posted, and one of them specifically talks about rain barrels, and the other ones specifically talks about gardening for rainwater, so you can go on the website and see those. That is the extent of last night's meeting.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Miller? Hearing none, we move on to the Planning Commission, Mr. Pelman.
Scott, he's muted.
You're muted, Scott.
It's.
Doesn't he usually have his, like, computer in here as well?
Yeah, he's, he's on the phone and on the computer, but the, the phone is what he uses, because he doesn't have a microphone on his computer, I believe. And I think his phone is also muted.
Can you hear us? There he is.
Yeah, there I am. Okay, yes, the Planning Commission did meet, meet on March 22nd, it was an in-person meeting at the council chambers. As we all well know, the, the Planning Commission looked at whether or not to approve the final land development plan for the sunup expansion there, and that property on Walnut Street, which led to the roll call vote at our council meeting on April 6. As you might have guessed, I was a little disappointed, and, and one of the things that's odd about the Planning Commission, you know, this committee, I mean, not the committee, but the liaison talks that we do at this council meeting, is that it's far enough after we have our Planning Commission meeting, that we don't get to talk about the details that went on in the Planning Commission until after we've already had a, a council vote. And as you might have guessed, like I said, I was, I was one of the ones that voted against the approval of the final land development plan, and having that vote in this Zoom format also made it difficult. I know Mark Stoner would have liked to have had a say, and as we all recall, he would have spoken out against the, in particular, the traffic part of that whole plan. The, the thing that gives me reason to pause about the whole thing is that we have this commission made up of volunteers, and they put a lot of their time in, and they could not approve the final land development plan, they didn't disapprove it, and I don't know if there was some confusion there or what, but then we went ahead and approved it, and I just don't know what that does for the confidence of the people that sit on that Planning Commission, when we approve something that they couldn't approve. So that was a little disappointing. You know, we're looking constantly, replacing members of our Planning Commission, they, they meet at length about this, and then we vote to do something that they couldn't vote for, so therein lies my, my concerns. The one other thing that was accomplished at that Planning Commission meeting is Mark Stoner basically volunteered to be the vice chair, so they do have a vice chair now, it's former councilperson Mark Stoner, but that was pretty much, he volunteered to do it, there was no really other people interested. And that's all I have for the planning.
Any questions or comments for Mr. Pelman?
Yeah, could I, could I clarify the action of the Planning Commission, and the reason why council had to take action on that? Under the MPC, under the MPC, we are required to do an up or down vote. We were at the end of that, that, that review period, after the multitude of extensions and stuff that they had granted us, that extension ran out on the Saturday after the council meeting. If council would not have taken action on that, as the Planning Commission did take action on it, it would have been a deemed approval, and you wouldn't have had any conditions put on that project at all. It would have been deemed approved, done and over with, and we would have had to go to court to have that reversed. So without them offering a extension, they basically said, it's either an up or down vote on this, and that's the way that it had to be. The Planning Commission made motions both for and against, and neither one of them got a second, which is odd in itself. Usually, if you have, you can't get a positive second, you get a unanimous negative, but in this case, they went neither way. So it was a, council had to take an action on that plan, yes or no.
And I believe, and you can correct me if I'm wrong here, there was additional information that we received the night of our meeting that was not provided to the Planning Commission when they could not come to an agreement. Am I correct in that, Mr. Szczeski?
Well, Engineer Rogowski was at our meeting, at the, at this meeting. Engineer Rogowski was not at the Planning Commission meeting. However, Paul Wood, who is a traffic engineer for Pinoni, and he's filled in for Greg on many other things, and we've worked with him very well over the years on, on a lot of different things. He was there, he didn't speak yes or no about the waivers, and in this case, Greg did. I think there was some details left out by the engineer for the applicant that may, may have helped sway the, the Planning Commission one way or another. When you look at the numbers, you're talking about basically a 17-second difference between what's there now, and what is the potential for this going in. So that's a, I mean, to me, it was, to me, I was more worried about the procedures than getting it, a vote on council, yes or no, because if we'd have left that go without any conditions on it as a deemed approval, we lost total control of that project.
Right, right. Any, any other comments? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to the Rec Board. Mrs. Agarjun.
Thank you. As you can see, I think we are the total agenda for this evening, so the pool work continues, and I appreciate the engineer and Roger making sure that we are going to be able to open safely. We are in the process of hiring lifeguards, so if you know any youngins that want to come and work at the pool, please encourage them to apply sooner than later. We'd like to. We'd like to get um our staff hired and trained. Um, so you'll see, there's a couple of things with the pool to look over tonight. And then the other thing is with our work with Community Day, and thank you to Councilman Anthony for participating in the meeting when I was not feeling well last week. Um, I appreciate that the teamwork for Community Day. You'll also see the hometown hero banners that we've been talking about. Um, and we're looking to take some action on that this evening to celebrate our veterans in Mechanicsburg. And that is it.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Mrs. Agerton? Hearing none, we move on to the shade tree commission, Mr. Booker.
Yes, I have, I have a report for the shade tree commission. So this was the first meeting uh since June eleventh uh twenty twenty. So uh, we're cresting up on any, on a year here, so it was exciting to get back to things. Um, there were two new members, so they were able to meet. Um, really, it was a lot of uh housekeeping items to kind of like uh, uh, make goals for the coming, coming year and trying to get uh all the members up to speed. Um, I, but as far as like uh efforts moving forward, one, uh, one of the key pieces that I, uh, we talked about, or they talked about in the meeting rather, was um updating the tree inventory of shade trees. Um, uh, and the other thing was um potential new uh tree plantings moving forward. Um, but there was no, nothing firm as far as, as what those tree plantings look like.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Booker?
Yes, Joe, I have a tree inventory for Memorial Park in my possession that I will be more than glad to turn over to the shade tree commission.
Oh, perfect.
It has a category, it has all the trees in Memorial Park. I am, I was in the process of updating it with, with the forty-eight trees that were removed, but um, it has maps, it has all kinds of different symbols and sheets after sheets after spreadsheets of all the trees that are in Memorial Park. I will be more than glad to turn that over to your possession.
Oh, certainly, I will get that uh in the hands of the right people. It was uh right before Matt Witters left, um, we were doing a, a community tree inventory. So uh, the, the trees within the borough and the tree lawn were what we were identifying and try, getting approximate sizes to um, to, to classify basically the health, kind of like the same thing you did in the park or they did in the park, but um around the borough.
There is some of that stuff that we used. It's not in the comprehensive plan, but we did an inventory of that in two thousand nine. When we started the comprehensive plan, so there are maps that, they're not included in the comprehensive plan, but that data does exist. So at least we have a base to start with.
Oh, excellent. Thank you.
Yep.
All right, thank you very much. Uh, moving on, school board, I just have a few items uh to report. Um, they, I, uh, the school board has released the bid for the high school academic addition. Um, the pool management agreement with the Borough Mechanicsburg was approved. And uh, as of April the nineteenth, all K through eighth grades will be going back to, or have gone back to now, a four-day-a-week-in-classroom with Wednesday being the remote day. This complies with the new state mandates and advice from uh the school district's panel of doctors. Um, and lastly, the high school students are still on the A B hybrid model of two days in class and three days remote. And the purpose for that is to allow struggling students to come in additional days and catch up while still complying with the state mandates. That's all I have to report from the school board. Any questions or comments? Okay, we will move on to the manager's report, Mr. Szczesinski.
Uh, I'm gonna just be brief tonight. I, I will submit a written report, but there's a few things on here of note. Um, and I think council and uh the public need to be aware of what we're looking at. Um, on Wednesday, the seventeenth, the day after the council meeting last ti- last month, um, attended the Cumberland County Yard Waste Recycling Committee meeting. Um, we discussed the grinder situation and the, the compost site. Plus, we also talked to a, a couple companies that are looking at um relieving us of some of the overabundance of uh material we have on site out there. So uh, we should be able to get some of that down and cut down some grinding time on the grinder because uh they wanted first ground stuff. Uh, Friday the nineteenth, attended the Jubilee Day Planning uh Committee meeting. Then um, on the twenty-third, twenty-fifth of Thursday, the twenty-fifth, met with our insurance agent, Josh Kilmer. Uh, we went over the policy renewal and reviewed the claims and the performance from the previous year. We actually did really well as far as that goes, um, not a lot of claims. And uh, our liability insurance, uh, we should see a, a nice dividend this year. Um, Friday the twenty-sixth, I met with the National League of Cities on a webinar uh for the Federal American Rescue Plan Implementation. Um, this was something that I think is, is outside of our realm um, with the National League of Cities because they're talking about having a tremendous infrastructure in place uh to try to help different things. I think we're very short-staffed to try to handle some of the stuff that was there. But they had some good ideas and I think we can implement them on a, on a, a simplified basis. Uh, on Wednesday, the fourteenth, the Personnel Committee and I met to discuss a few uh things going forward and how we want to handle uh things going forward in the future. They set a few uh requirements of me, and I will be getting back to them with that. Uh, some interesting things today. Yesterday, actually, I had a teleconference with um Zelenkov, Zelenkovsky and Axelrod. They're certified public accountants. Uh, they're a consultant firm that was recommended by the labor attorney. Uh, they have um experience with the CARES funding and a few other things. And the American Recovery Plan funds is what I'm looking at to consult with. There's no set rules right now as to what money can be spent on. However, um, these people are um very good at what they're, what they're doing in it. They come highly recommended. So um, they actually sent me a proposal and we'll, uh, that'll be ready for council to review at a later time. Uh, today, actually, I spoke to uh John uh, John with Brenneman, E J Brenneman LLC about uh, and Greg, I sent you something too, full-depth rest- restoration in place of paving the way we used to. It used to be that we would dig everything out, throw it all away and then come back in. Um, this is very similar to what Councilman Weber spoke about before. Uh, they come in with a big grinder, they grind up everything, they add some polymers to it, they put it back in, they pack it down, and then we pave on top of it. Um, as you see, most of our streets, and everyone will agree with this, most of our streets are paved or patched, patchwork right now. Um, not quite as bad as what Allendale was, but it's, they're getting there. So this is a, a better alternative to ripping up the entire streets and paving them. Um, and it'll give us a, maybe more bang for our buck. Um, and he has some creative ideas on uh, on financing going forward. He said it's very, there's some very attractive offers out there right now uh that he would be willing to look at. They're actually going to be in town the first week of May. And uh, we're going to take a look and see, make sure that this is a, a system that will work good for us in the Borough Mechanicsburg. Uh, and then one more thing was some discussion in the office today. Uh, everyone knows Barb Arnold, who is the recycling coordinator for the borough. She's been attending other classes too, um, for stormwater and a few other environmental items. Um, we had a discussion about potentially a pollinator garden. Uh, they're doing one in Carlisle and uh, it, it, I think there's, this kind of goes along with the rain barrel and the education stuff. We're gonna have to educate people because until this thing gets up and growing, it looks like a bunch of weeds. Um, so, but it'll help with the, the honeybees, the honeybees and a few of the other stuff. So I think uh, there, we're, we're looking around for areas and seeing what we can do with that. So uh, as I said, I'll submit my full report to the, for inclusion in a minute. So that's all I have.
Mic out, I didn't see it out there.
Hey, are we good?
Yes, that's all I have, sir.
I'm hearing residual noise here.
Yeah.
Okay, very good. The mayor's report.
Thank you very much. April third, Easter egg hunt at twenty-five West Main Street with prizes for adults and kids. It was very successful. April fifth, the Union Church meeting held at the gathering place opened to the public. Transfer of property and building maintenance was discussed. The outgoing president, that's me, was given a thank you resolution for the past years of service. And I will add to that, I've been involved with it since nineteen eighty-five. I've done a hundred and thirty-five weddings at the Union Church. And I've collected I do money of twenty thousand dollars, which was in a check form and forwarded to the treasurer. So I was pleased to be part of that. There's no longer a president, vice presidents, they, they're trustees and proprietors. In Mechanicsburg, there is a six-axle robot available. And it would be available for people like Messiah, Cumberland Potec or Harrisburg U. And uh, if you know anybody who'd be interested in this robot and the controller, see me and I will check you up with this, this fellow. It actually belongs to Joe Turi, Advanced Coatings Technology. And I think if it went to the right people for education, it would be at a very realistic price. And the report, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, chief of police report.
No reports, sir.
Thank you. Solicitors report.
Uh, no report this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Cassidy. Um, fire chiefs report.
Yeah, did, did anybody receive my report I sent earlier?
I did, I, yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to make a special note that uh the middle article on the police department at, at the house fire, I, I mean, that, that definitely warranted that their actions warranted that there's a recommendation made for their efforts. Uh, they were above and beyond the line of duty for sure. So that's all, I just wanted to, to recognize that. And that's all I have.
Hey, Chief, was that, was that that uh D O A?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
You bet.
Thank you, thank you both to the firepeople and the police for doing the best job possible in that terrible situation. So thank you, thank you very much.
Welcome.
EMC Wardle.
Good evening, everyone. I submitted a report yesterday to Roger. Hopefully you have received it. Uh, I, I do want to note that cases and hospitalizations and deaths are all rising again in the Commonwealth despite the increases in vaccination. Uh, so I think that the actions taken by council recently to uh hold off on returning to kind of some normal events have been prudent and have been wise decisions. And I would also urge you to keep that in mind as you plan for how you would be holding council meetings in the month of May. Thank you.
Well, this might be a good time to discuss that. Um, since we're on the subject. I too have been seeing the same thing, of course, that Nate's reported, the rise in cases. I'll let, I'll, I'll open it up to the, to the floor for comments, and then we'll need to make a decision on whether we continue via Zoom or if we go live. So anyone want to make comments?
You know, I always want to comment on this. Um, I think that it would make sense to hold off for another month and continue to do that mostly because I do, the numbers and the hospitalizations rising. I know that um, the hospital in Cumberland County yesterday, they had really high admissions. And what I would want is a safe alternative for people who do want to attend. And I think Zoom provides that right now. And I think in the future, we should still look for a hybrid model for citizens to participate. Um, somehow if they don't feel safe coming to a meeting until this is um in a different stage.
I would agree with the Zoom meeting for another month.
Yeah, I, I'm gonna echo uh what Sarah said about the uh hybrid model. I think that's something we should, should definitely look into because I don't think, uh, I mean, people's comfort level, I don't, I, I don't think we'll ever go back to the way it used to. Um, so I think offering both ways is, is something that we should look into.
And just for, I, I agree with everything that's been said in regard to this matter. And just for clarification purposes, I think it, I think that boards, commissions, the authority, of course, will follow or should follow council's lead in terms of when we go live and when we're on Zoom. That is, uh, I think that provides some clarity and some consistency.
I agree with that and all of it, Kyle. I think that the boards and commissions should follow suit. If the council is deciding to be virtual, they should be as well for the safety of everybody involved.
Any other comments? That, from what I hear, it looks like we're staying virtual for another month. And we will readdress this uh in the second meeting of May.
The only comment that I ha- I have, a planning commission meeting for next Monday and a Harb meeting for the Monday after. Um, are you, uh, would that be your recommendation? That we beat those with uh, on virtual Zoom? Uh, the planning commission, I don't think will be too much of an issue. We have um a conditional use application uh to consider, and that's the only thing. And that will be coming, council then in May to set the date for it. Um, and the uh, the Harb meeting is two basic, two basic Harb plans uh to be reviewed, so.
I, I, I would, I would say, let's stay virtual.
Okay.
Unless I hear disagreement from the rest of the body. I'm hearing none. I hear crickets, but I'm not hearing anything else. So uh, yeah, we'll, we'll make that virtual, Roger.
All right, I'll make sure that that gets out. Um, and we'll go from there.
All right, thank you very much. And thank you, uh, Nate, for your input. We appreciate it. Are there any additions to the agenda this evening?
I have no additions to the agenda, sir.
Then we will need approval of the agenda as submitted. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mrs. Agerton. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Uh, I think that was, who was that?
That was me.
Rodney? Okay, Mr. Whitcomb seconds. All right, any discussion? Hearing none, uh, Mrs. Martin?
Unless I hear a negative response, I will record the vote as unanimous.
All right, Mr. Szczesinski.
Okay, the action items before council on April twentieth, twenty twenty-one. Discussion and action to approve change order one for the pool renovations in the amount of five thousand nine hundred sixty-eight dollars and one cent.
Do I hear a motion?
So move.
That was Mr. Anthony. And a second?
I'll second.
Mrs. Agerton, is there any discussion?
President, just by means of clarification, obviously, there's two different agenda items. It's because we have two different contracts. And this first item that, that um has been moved and seconded is specifically related to um, the fact that we had what we thought were as-built drawings for the pool, which weren't very accurate. Um, so we had to uh make some modifications to where the drains were at, as well as the water stop, which is the piece that keeps the pool waterproof around the new floor uh due to the uh, the configuration of the walls, so.
So that's what this was, this one is about.
Correct. There's a second one for some related items, yep.
Right. You had a question, Mr. Booker, or did he answer that for you?
Yeah, I, I was just uh, uh, gonna, I wanted, it was, would, these things have been addressed by, um, I know it's, never mind. I was gonna say, never mind. Okay.
All right, any other comments? All right, uh, then Mrs. Martin, it's in your ballpark.
Unless I hear a negative response, I will record the vote as unanimous.
And the motion carries. Next item, please.
Discussion and action to approve change order number one for the pool epoxy coating in the amount of seventeen thousand forty-five dollars and ninety-eight cents. That's attachment two.
Do I hear a motion at all?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mrs. Agerton. Is there a second?
I will second that.
Mr. Whitcomb seconds. Mr. Rogowski, you want to give us an additional clarification on that one as well?
Yep, so item number one of that particular change order is related to the pool joints themselves. We, we knew that that was going to need to be done. We, we didn't know how, to what extent that needed to be done until it was sandblasted. Unfortunately, all the joints need done. Um, the good news is that after we took the coatings off, um, most of the pool, uh, there was two minor repairs, which really were not um of significance. Um, some of the cracking that we saw in the actual uh floor of the pool, for example, was just the, the coating that had cracked. The previous coat, many layers of coating. So the pool's actually in really good shape, uh, given its age, so, you know, given the concrete shell and things like that. Uh, item number- Item number two is some additional work in the gutter area, as well as the vertical part of the gutter. And we had originally excluded that from the bid, thinking that we would just paint that on an annual basis. And then after looking at how everything ties together and recommendations from the coder, we made the decision to just epoxy the whole thing. We think that'll give a better long-term solution and also avoid the issue of paint coming off on people's bathing suits and stuff like that, so. And then item three are the three colorful water features in the main pool. They're pretty, pretty roughed up. We didn't include that in the original package to have them blasted and recoded. But we think this is the appropriate time to do it. I think this, as a whole, is going to give you the look you want when you're done with a, basically a new, a whole, a whole new package. If not faded water features in the middle of the pool.
The key word for me is long-term.
Yep.
Yeah, I like that.
I, I'm, I'm not sure if this would be related, but I know, so I know we're doing, oh, it is related to the pool. But we're doing a lot of work, construction work on the, like the pool itself and the drains. I mean, what kind of condition is our, is our actual like pump and stuff in, in our filter system?
All, all the pumps and filter, go ahead, Greg.
Well, I was going to defer to you, Roger, actually, because I, I've never even, we pulled a rat out of it, if that helps, I don't know.
Yeah, we do that. And then the duck, the duck nest that's in front of the concession stand, so. The pumps and stuff have been bumped when we made the decision in 2020 not to open the pool. Actually, when we closed the pool in 2019, the sewer guys have been going in every other week and what they call bumping the pumps to make sure that they're, they're staying free, they're not locking up. They, they continued to do that all summer last year and they've continued to do it through the winter this year. So the, the pumps and stuff are in good shape. The filters and stuff, I mean, they're, they're, they dry out, we have to rehydrate them and stuff like that. One of the tasks that I have on my board that I've got to get taken care of this week, actually, there's two of them concerning the pool. One is to get the, the Department of Ag to issue the licenses for the amenities. The other one is to get Aqua Specialist over here to go over the chemical pumps and to set the filters and stuff in place. Because as soon as Greg gives me the okay that we could start putting water in the pool, I want to start putting water in that pool and getting the pumps running. And then that'll be, you know, we're going to have to get the chemicals up and running and, and going from there, so. But once, once the epoxy's installed and ready to go, I want to get water started in that pool as soon as we can.
Yeah, thank you, Roger. The reason I ask is because of like long-term planning. I mean, if, if we're doing all this work now, I, I, I want to make sure that we're, we're taking care of in the long term of the pump end and the filter end of things, so thank you for answering this question.
There are a few minor changes I want to make to the, to the pump house itself. I think we can enclose that and maybe make it out a little bit further so that it's more protected from the weather. And I've already gone over some of that stuff with the, with the highway department, the public works director. So long-term planning, we are looking down the road as to what we can do potentially at the end of summer to try to make that stuff weather better.
All right, cool, thanks.
Yep.
One other non-related item, just, just for an update in general. They intend to be back in here this week to do the joints on themselves. They're not as weather dependent as the coating. They do need above 40 degrees for a couple of days, which obviously even tomorrow night, I think it is, or tonight, tomorrow night, it's supposed to be down in the 30s again, so we're kind of playing that weather game a little bit. So as soon as we can get a patch, it does look like next week, we're going to be up above consistently if we can avoid the rain kind of thing. So I, I'm still very, very confident that we'll be ready to go by Memorial Day.
Perfect. Any other questions or comments? Mrs. Martin?
You're muted, Sarah.
Unless I hear a negative response, I will record the vote as unanimous.
And the motion carries. Last item.
It would be the key word for 2021. You're muted. Discussion and action to approve the Hometown Hero banners to be displayed on York, Simpson, Main and Washington Streets leading to the park, not to interfere with the banners already on display on Main Street. Attachment three.
Do I hear a motion?
I'll make that move.
Okay, I'm going to give Sarah the nod on that one, Rodney, and you can have the second, if that's okay?
All right, that's not a problem.
All right, so it's been properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Oh, just a question, who's paying for them?
Okay, can I step in here, Sarah?
Yep, absolutely.
We have been, originally, the plan was that the families would donate money toward, the families of veterans would donate money toward, however, in contacting the Legion, who is a big player in this, the Legion has said they would foot the bill for it. Now, these are very expensive. I don't know if you see that, you know, you can tell by the, the sample, which is not very clear on your packet. But that's a huge expense, but they seem to think that they can, they can cover it. And we're expecting some donations as well when families submit names. There's a, there is a form going out that would allow them to make a donation toward it as well. So I think financially, it's not going to cost the borough anything, if that's the question. And with regard to where they're being hung, there's a good possibility there could be over 200 of these. I mean, the latest early count is over 200. It's a pleasant dilemma, I think, to be able to honor that many people. So we'll have to do some creative planning on where and how we mount those to poles in those streets that were mentioned. Some may have two on a pole. They, they tell me that on crossings, that you put two perpendicular or right angles to each other at the crossing. So potentially you could have eight signs on one four-way crossing, so that's kind of cool. But I, I, I hope this thing falls, follows through because it's really a cool. If you've been to communities that have these, it, it really is very, very cool. So, and it goes in with, along with the 100th anniversary of Soldiers and Sailors Memorial Park. And that's the reason for doing this. So we want to include it with the Community Day celebration. So that's where, that's where, that's what I know about it, Sarah, if you want to jump in there and add some more?
Nope, I think you covered it. I think it's, I'm super excited that the Legion was able to, to find those funds because I think it's such an important thing, tying in the anniversary and also celebrating all of those who have sacrificed so much for us. So, thank you.
I understand they're working with a local printer as well, so it's not being farmed out to like New Jersey or Minnesota or someplace. It's going to be a local firm that does it, which I think is even better. So that's very cool. So is there any other discussion? Hearing none, Mrs. Martin?
Unless I hear a negative response, I will record the vote as unanimous.
And hearing no negative responses, the motion carries. At this point in time, it's an opportunity for citizens to make comments. Are there any citizens out there who want to make comment? If so, use your raise hand feature. I'm not seeing or hearing any at this point. So we will go to any other business. We're going to start with Mrs. Martin?
Please hand in your ethics forms.
Think it might be wise to send a, a little email notice to the people who have it.
Okay.
Could you do that? Thank you. Mrs. Boyer?
Nothing, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Szczesinski?
Uh, actually, nothing really that pops to mind right now.
Good. Mrs. Aggerton?
Um, just a couple of things. Right now, Earth Day celebration's going on virtually, so if you are on Facebook, please like and share from the Downtown Partnership. There's a couple of activities, there's online bidding for the rain barrels, which are, were hand painted by some students. So it's a good opportunity to virtually support our environment. And they have a lot of neat videos going on right now. And then also, unfortunately, we did decide to cancel the wine and walk coming up. So I know that that was sent out. Maybe we could get a little social media from Roger and some other people, just to let them know that the Art Wine Walk has been canceled this year due to COVID restrictions. It was a long discussion, but just knowing that the businesses and the different restrictions for being able to sit down and, and be able to sip on wine, just wasn't able to make it happen this year.
Sarah, if I can interrupt, it's my understanding that they're thinking about trying to reschedule it for later in the fall.
That is correct, so they, the hope is, is that we're able to do a couple of different creative things, most of them involving being outside. They're looking at a golf tournament coming up to raise some funds and then being able to do that in the fall. I also, on a side note, with the participation from the adults, from the Easter egg hunt and winning prizes, we've been discussing about coming up with some kind of activity for adults to do a hunt downtown. So I, I just think that right now, it's really important for all of these organizations to look at how we can get out and enjoy some fresh weather and celebrate Mechanicsburg a little bit. So they're working on it.
Okay, thank you. Sorry to interrupt.
Nope, you're fine.
Mr. Anthony?
Uh, just a question, not an item. So the pool is opening on time, we think, and, and going to be open for the entire season?
We're going to do what we can with it, yes. We're, we're still advertising for lifeguards at this point in time. I've met with Mr. Zimmerman and with the Public Works Director as to what we need to do up there as far as the amount of heat that we're going to trap inside that building. Our computer system is, is ready to go for the front desk. The, I do have a final meeting with Tanya and Sue on what we're going to do with the concession stand, how we're going to go from there. The biggest thing right now is the, getting the proper amount of lifeguards.
So how many are you short?
Usually at this time, we have 20, 25. We have eight.
Okay.
Also just started advertising for it. I mean, so what, I think we met two weeks ago, Roger?
Something like that, yeah.
Coach Glumack has put out a request to, I think a lot of the guards have gone to other places because they weren't sure we were opening up.
Yeah, but one of the things is Hampton Township's water slide this year is not going to be open, not due to a COVID situation, but due to a structural situation. So unfortunately, they're going to, they may end up losing a, an amenity over there, so that may benefit us in the long run. So that's, we'll have to see where that goes, so.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Booker?
Uh, yeah, the only comment I have is that web presence management proposal that was just in our packet. That's just for our review for now, is, is that what that is?
Now until the Community and Economic Development Committee, that's, that's for educational purposes right now. They asked us to contact them at the last community outreach meeting and that was generated out of that meeting. So we're, they're planning on having a meeting shortly soon to discuss that and perhaps get those people on board.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Miller?
I have nothing further.
Thank, thank you. Mr. Powellman?
Yes, Chief Neff mentioned in his report, the fatal fire on High Street. And we certainly owe a lot of thanks to the members of the fire company and the police department for them taking care of that. This basically played itself out in my backyard, so I was able to watch for quite some time. And it's really impressive to watch the work, in particular, the fire company did. That, that was hard work. It wasn't just, you know, spraying water, even though that's hard work on, on a fire. I mean, they had to tear parts of the building apart and they really worked hard and worked there for several hours. So my hat's off to the fire company and the police department for the job they did in that. That's it.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Whitcomb?
I have nothing other than the fact that Phillies are winning 4-1 in the top of the fifth.
Well, thank you very much. Go Phils.
It's early.
All right, Mr. Mayor?
A couple of things. This Environmental Advisory Council is holding a recycling event. It's this Saturday at the, at the park. And don't be late, because if you're late, sometimes they'll turn you away if they're too full. And if you're getting tired of saying the word vaccination, or shot, or injection, you can use the word jab. The British use the word jab when you get an injection, so you could start using the word jab.
All right, no jabs or sucker punches coming your way, sir. Mr. Cassidy?
I have nothing to add.
Thank you very much. Mr. Neff?
Yeah, nothing to add, thank you.
Chief Myers?
Nothing, sir, thank you.
Thank you, and Mr. Rogowski?
Who's there?
And, oh, I forgot, Mr. Wardle? Thank you. Did I miss anyone? Hey, hey, I got everyone tonight. Very good. I have no further comments. I'd just like to thank everybody for being here and, and your discussion on matters. Appreciate it very much and we will move forward next month with another virtual set of meetings and hope that maybe by June, if we're lucky, we'll be back together again. So thank you for that. Meeting is adjourned.